To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I lost my place. Yeah, item two. Mr. Lipinski, to the podium. The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
Constitution of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully the duties of?
To discharge the faithful duties of?
The position of police officer of St. Joseph.
The position of police officer of St. Joseph.
I will well and truly serve?
I will well and truly serve.
Our sovereign country and state?
Our sovereign country and state.
Without favor or affection?
Without favor or affection.
Malice or ill will?
With malice or ill will.
Until I am legally discharged?
Until I am legally discharged.
I will see and cause our communities peace?
I will see and cause our communities peace.
To be kept and preserved?
Be kept and preserved.
I will prevent to the best of my ability?
I will prevent to the best of my abilities.
All offenses against that peace?
All offenses against that peace.
According to the law?
According to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and welcome. Does he sign both now?
Yes.
He gets to keep one? Okay. Sign that one, you can keep it, now you can sign that one and I'll take it with me. You guys want to take a picture up here?
Yeah, get up there.
Everybody, come on, come on everybody.
Joy is occasion.
And I'll take this one away. Thank you, congratulations. I'm not going to stand with you, just as a family pic. Come on, you guys, get up here. There, wait, wait.
Magard.
Magard. One more. Get in there. Kayla too. Nice.
Congratulations.
Thank you. That you got to do outside. Alright, thank you guys. Item two, I mean item three, public comments. Anybody wishing to be heard about something not on the agenda tonight, please step forward. See you in no, we'll wait, there's public hearing for years.
Oh, okay.
Is that okay? Right? Yeah, okay. See you in no, step forward. Item four, approval of the agenda. Motion second on the approval of the agenda, any changes? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion does carry. Item five, consent agenda. Motion and second, um, on the consent agenda, hold on a second. I just have one question. This kind of goes to the gambling report. I don't know how this works, but, sorry Laurie, I didn't, you know, throw you off because I know you're getting kind of nervous, but, how does the Grand City Lumberjacks have a net profit of thirty-two and donations of one hundred and thirty-two thousand?
They don't split it out, um, between all their gambling organizations and their proceeds go back to the lumberjacks. We have, they have to donate ten percent within a fifteen mile radius of St. Joseph's, so they just make that. So, they don't split it out, um, they just tell us the, the total that went to the lumberjacks and it's all their gambling locations. So really, St. Joseph is a hundred percent going to?
Okay, I get it. I just thought, man, I wish I could make kind of profit like that. Okay, very, motion and second, uh, the consent agenda. Bob is going to abstain on the first one because he was gone. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? One. Thank you. Let's see. Item six, uh, public hearing, truth and taxation. She's going to give a little presentation and then we'll let you speak, okay?
Alright.
And then we move on.
Okay, can we, we can switch to the laptop over here? By chance? It takes a second to sync up. So I do have a short, just, um, PowerPoint presentation, just to kind of go through the budget. There's certain items that we need to discuss publicly, publicly per state statute. So we'll go through those items and, um, then we can take questions, comments from the public. If that's okay with you. There's nothing on the backside of it.
Yeah, there's nothing on the backside of that. I'm a train.
Try this. I'm a train. Where's our IT people, where's our clerk? If it works better, I can go up to the podium too, that would work easier.
Oh, hey.
There is something?
Are we getting there? Oh. Yeah, don't update now.
Yeah, I know.
Don't, don't update now.
That was a problem with one of the computers.
Slide show.
Yeah.
Bingo. From beginning.
Yeah.
Don't update now.
Probably just exit the other ones.
I mean, if we can't get the slides roll, we can show it this way too, it's fine. We can see it.
That's funny. Maybe I have to save it before I can.
So, we're here tonight, um, we set the truth of taxation hearing to discuss the, the final, um, tax and levy, um, that's proposed for 2022. Just kind of a little synopsis of the process as it's in our state statutes. Um, the Minnesota legislators, they pass bills in the spring, um, and that sets the tax rates for what we have. And levy for each jurisdiction. They'll set tax rates for themselves, for the state, which would affect commercial properties. They'll also establish what the local government aid, um, contribution would be. And, um, kind of get the levy and the tax rates ready to go for, um, us to be able to go into our budget process. So, the commercial properties, as I said, they have a state portion into their levy, uh, residentials do not. The tax statements that would have went out include both city, county, school district, and some special taxing districts. The state also dictates what has to be done at the truth and taxation hearing, which is the hearing we're, um, going into tonight. By July thirty-first, they certify what the levy is, or what the LGA is going to be for the next year. That's the local government aid, the state aid that we talk about, um, and so that, in our case, is a significant portion of our budget. So, we do need to know what that number is so that we can accordingly assign what the levy might be. By September thirtieth, um, council has to enact the preliminary levy. And also set the TNT, the truth and taxation hearing, which is what we're doing tonight. That preliminary levy, we cannot, um, exceed for the final levy unless there's a, a unique, um, special circumstance. We're not in that situation, so we cannot go higher than what our preliminary levy was. The, the county then has to send out, um, proposed tax statements to all property owners that are, um, affected by the taxes. And they usually are on the fifteenth of November that they send it out here to St. Joseph ta, um, taxpayers. And then somewhere between November twenty-fifth and December twenty-eighth, the city council is required to hold their truth and taxation hearing. And other jurisdictions like the county and the school district are also, they also have separate hearings on their taxes. I wanted to point out one item that, um, may affect some homeowners, that the homestead, um, declaration must be certified by December fifteenth to be included on your property taxes. So if you don't have, um, a homestead is a residential property in which, um, you own and you reside in for at least, um, six months and one day. So, if you qualify, there's certain, there's a certain form that you need to certify with the county auditor. So I wanted to just, uh, mention that to folks because that deadline is coming up on December fifteenth. So if they, um, maybe refinance, purchase a new home, you want to make sure that, um, you completed that certification at closing of, of those loans. Or the property changing hands. And then by December twenty-eighth, the city council must adopt the, the final levy. If you do not take action on that, then it just simply goes to the prior year's levy. Here in St. Joseph, we began, um, discussing some budget items, kind of high level, um, goals for the 2022 budget. We started already back in February. Discuss some of the improvement projects that you might want to see, um, that sort of thing. We had a couple workshops where we discussed, uh, some of those projects early on. Over the summer, we talked about staffing levels, uh, the capital projects, as I said. We discussed the dues and memberships a few times, um, benefits. We had the debt management study presented from Northland Securities. And we talked about just future goals and what you wanted to see in the budget. On December seventh is when you adopted your preliminary levy and set the truth and taxation hearing as well. We continued some budget discussions here over the fall. Uh, we didn't talk about the enterprise budgets until the fall time, which is more driven by the utility rates. But we also looked at, you know, the effects again of that preliminary levy and if there were any changes that we wanted to do before we went into this hearing tonight. So we set the public hearing for December sixth here tonight and you, again, you must adopt by December twenty-eighth. If you so desire, you can adopt tonight after the public hearing is closed. If the, if the hearing does indeed close tonight. A little bit of an overview of what's in the budget, and this includes what's in the, the proposed final budget. We did make a few adjustments over the fall and reduce the, the levy a little bit. We have a full-time police clerk and a police officer. They were hired in 2021, um, with budget savings that we had in 2021, but we had to add those, that, that budget line item for 2022. So they're technically in addition for 2022. And then we also have, um, a full-time mechanic scheduled to hire next summer, sometime maybe in July. We added back the planner interned, um, next summer. We took a, a year off from that, that, uh, objective, but we're trying to add that back. It is pretty busy in the planning department and especially over the summer months, there's a lot of plans that need to be reviewed and things to take care of. The, um, contracts for the unions and, uh, non-union staff was settled in spring of 2020. And that proposed, uh, tw, two percent, uh, general increase starting, beginning of 2022. So overall, we have twenty-two, or twenty-eight full-time staff, one part-time. And then the planning intern and some seasonal staff in the public works department. And then also to call to your attention, we did, um, the council did approve increasing the, the fall, the fire call stipend from twelve dollars to sixteen dollars per hour. And you took that action a couple months ago already. For operations, um, you've indicated you wanted to continue with the dues and memberships that we had from 2021. The consulting contracts were, we don't have any, I don't believe, scheduled for RFPs. So we're continuing the contracts as they are for 2022. The property tax sharing, that's a line item in the budget where we show the amount that we pay to, um, St. Joseph Township for a portion of the annexation, and the annexed, um, property taxes that they no longer get, the city gets. We had a five-year turnaround where we were going to reimburse them, um, like eighty tw, sixty, forty, twenty percent of the property taxes based on that, that level from 2019, um, back to them to help them transition away from having those taxes. So that was just part of the agreement, so that goes through December 2025. Uh, each year, the city will gain more and more of those property taxes for city purposes. The street silcoating and crack filling is budgeted, it's based on the pavement management plan. And what, uh, Ryan and, and the engineering department are seeing out in the streets. There is a maintenance, some maintenance costs that were added for some roof repairs that are needed, uh, specifically at the fire hall and I think at some of the water plants. And then again, on the fire service side, we're, we're gaining the amount that we have to pay for that piece that was annexed in 2019. So, we're going to gain more and more of the market value percentage in the fire service over a five-year period as well. So, we're gaining a little bit more there. So we have a higher expenditure realization, but, um, we're getting more taxes in now too and realizing more of those, kind of offsetting each other. Here's a list of the capital equipment items that are proposed for 2022. Uh, we do have, uh, bi-annual election that Kayla's excited about. So that's coming up and that will have the governor's race on it and some state representatives, uh, federal, federal level as well. Kayla loves her job then. So the police department is looking at, uh, buying out the last squad that we have leased, um, and they're looking at purchasing tasers. And I believe we're also looking at, uh, body cameras, I didn't list that on here, but, um, looking at body cameras for 2022 as well. Fire department has some turnout gear that they just kind of have scheduled in the replacement, um, as gear wears out. And instead of doing thirty sets in a year, we try to tier those out a little bit, uh, because they're about three thousand, twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars apiece, so try to tier those out. Uh, the fire department's also due to rotate their rescue van and their grass rig. And you already took action earlier this year to start the process to order the pumper tanker, fire truck was, which is an addition. In the admin side, we're adding, uh, the main server, um, replacing that, and you've already taken action on that to get that going. With the squad, there's camera and radar updates. Talked about silk coat and, and crack filling, uh, trail maintenance along with that. Sometime, uh, Ryan would like to replace his pickup number twenty-five, uh, was due this year with the back order in, in the, the trucks, the utility trucks. We're hoping that 2022 is a successful year. Rough cut, cut, the rough cut more. And we did purchase the, uh, second public works facility behind the current garage. So we'll be doing some of that remodel work in the current garage and behind there to make things work a little more efficiently. Kleinfelter restrooms are scheduled to be installed for 2022, and that's been a project on the books for several years. And finally coming to fruition that the park board is, is trying to, uh, fine tune now. Think admin is looking at doing a fire study, uh, with, uh, coordination of some of the area cities. And as you know, we're in the process of designing and capital campaign and all that sort of thing with the community center. So there's a lot of work going on with the community center, um, for the public to be involved in throughout the year too. And then we have some studies going on, that are currently going on and upcoming as well in the utility funds. Randy is proposing one, uh, improvement for next year, and that's the street overlay improvements. And I've listed the streets that this would, um, uh, be affected on. Randy is in the process, or SCH, his firm is doing the feasibility study that the council had a war, are, um, called in already. So soon we should be seeing that report and getting into final design and bidding those projects out. I have a little breakdown of, so the general fund, um, I included the fund numbers if you're looking at like all the detailed, uh, what comes off of our finance system. So the general fund includes all these different fund numbers in there. You can see like increases in wages, decreases in professional services, um, like adding the mechanic, we're going to save some money on contracted costs for some of those vehicle repairs, so that's going to save us money there. It's also, that, that savings in the professional services is also where we're going to see some of that savings from that annexation, property tax sharing. So that is another reason why there's a larger decrease. Capital outlay looks like it's increasing a lot, but we, um, set money aside over a five-year plan. And so, a lot of that increase in the capital outlay of that seven hundred forty is money that's actually been set aside. So it's not that we're, we're increasing the capital budget significantly in this one year. That is why we do the five-year planning, so we don't have to increase the levy significantly in one year just to cover capital needs. Just a short summary, um, this is a little bit more highlighted in the council agenda packet, but other governmental funds I've kind of included there. And I highlighted a couple items. The half-cent sales tax where you see that increase there, that's really the community center, um, the work there. Park dedication, that's really the Kleinfelter bathrooms that we just talked about. And the debt service fund looks like it has a large increase, but, um, really, and that, this, that's like the, the bond interest and principal payments that we have on, on current bonds that are outstanding. The reason why that looks like it's so high for 2022 is because we, um, refinance, or we refunded a bond from this building and the old Kennedy that we, um, had to call early, but it's really not, we can't pay it off until 2022. So we have those monies set aside in an escrow fund to pay that bond off in 2022 when we're allowed to. So, it looks large, but it's really money that we already set aside from actions taken this year. The enterprise funds, again, anything with a six hundred, um, fund code are the enterprise funds. We have five of those here in the city. And this is what shows up basically on your utility bills, your water bills that, that people get every other month. So, it's kind of the same discussion that we've had in the other funds that are, um, being affected here in the utility funds as well. The big discussion is where are the proposed levies? And I did a comparison from 2021 where we are at. And we are looking at overall, um, the preliminary levy showed about a four and a half, four point six percent increase in the levy, or the tax rate. We, with the reductions that we're at, we're at a two point seven percent decrease, or increase. So, we did bring down the levy a couple percentages. So, what people would have seen in their, their preliminary tax statement is going to be higher than what the final levy is going to be, uh, when they get their final statements in March. And I highlighted again, and now, another number there in the six million number in the other governmental funds. Again, that's mainly the debt service fund, the, uh, community center and the Kleinfelter bathrooms are showing in that line item. So that's why that looks so significantly higher. So when you look at all funds, the budget going from eleven million up to fifteen million, a lot of that is sitting in that line item for those couple items. I put a, a, just a short summary, I had a few more, uh, homes in the agenda packet, but I just wanted to highlight three of these here because they're at different, um, dollar levels. So one of the things, um, if we stayed constant in our tax rate, or i, in the market value of a home, if it's exactly the same from one year to the next, then they, they would actually see an overall decrease in the property taxes when you take in to affect all, uh, taxing jurisdictions. But the problem is, is that, uh, people will see typically an increase in the market value if they've done, um, improvements to their home, additions. That gets added on there. It also looks at sales, um, comparisons going on in the area. So, uh, just in general, in the state of Minnesota, property values have gone up, sells. It's really, uh, a, a issue that there's not a lot of market for homes, um, to purchase. And a population that is looking to, to purchase. So, it's driving up some of the sell prices on homes, so good for you. If you're getting ready to refinance and take some equity out or ready to sell, you might see, uh, some realization there. But it is also going to increase your property taxes a little bit. And that homestead credit that I was telling, that you need to have in by December fifteenth. As your market value goes up, you get less credit as well. So, it's kind of like a long, long ways around to try to figure out what your, it's not just apples and app, and oranges to figure out what your property tax, your taxes are going to be for next year. But just in the summary, for a hundred eleven thousand dollar home, uh, you might see an increase of about forty-eight dollars. This home number two, around the hundred and seventy thousand dollar market value, that, that homeowner might see about an eighty-eight dollar increase. And this is just the city tax portion. And that, uh, two hundred nine, ten thousand dollar home might see about a ninety-nine dollar increase, just on the city portion. But as I said, we're only one factor on that property tax statement. We have all these other jurisdictions, and when we take them all into account, the levy actually, um, overall levy would act, or tax rate would actually have decreased almost one percent. And so, a two hundred thousand dollar home, all things being stagnant with their market value, they would actually see a decrease of about sixteen dollars. A five hundred thousand dollar business might see a decrease in, of eighty-three dollars. And that business, I didn't put the state piece of it on there either, but it's kind of where it's at, so. Little comparison of where we are with the area cities. This does not include special taxing districts, so this is only including the county, the school district and the city portions of your taxes. And you can see, we're kind of in the median, um, area or level of the area cities, um, this is kind of where we fall. And that's what I have for the, the budget side of it, and then I have the, uh, fee schedule after the budget is taken care of.
The public hearing for truth and taxation. Those wishing to be heard, to the podium and name and address.
Name is Dick Kaufman, three nineteen East Minnesota Street. My proposed levy that I received is four hundred and twenty-one dollars. That's from the city, the county, and the school district. And figuring it out, the city's portion, I'm getting a proposed increase of two hundred and forty dollars. For the Stearns County, it's a hundred and fourteen dollars. And for the school district, it's about sixty-six dollars. The total, four hundred and twenty-one dollars, you divide that by twelve, that's over thirty-five dollars a month increase. I guess I'm totally befuddled why I'm getting such a big increase. As you mentioned, Laurie, in your, in your report there, in twenty-one, resident homestead. In twenty-two, it says resident non-homestead. Do you have to register every year?
I don't think you have to register every year, but, uh, you might want to reach out to the county and see if they're missing some document from you.
Uh, who would I go see at the county on that?
County auditor's office.
Because the estimated market value? Because the estimated market value on the place I own for twenty-two is two hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred dollars. Taxable market value is two hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred dollars. From the year before, that's an increase of twenty-four thousand six hundred dollars.
And I think that you'd have to look at your, you need need to follow up with the county on that homestead credit just to make sure, because you're you're not getting that homestead credit, I don't think, on a non-homesteaded valuation.
Who do I go see? The auditor or who?
Yes, go see the auditor and and make sure that you have the paperwork filled out. And I would say not only for you, but other residents too, if it is your full-time home and it has that non-homesteaded um classification on your taxes, to please go into the county auditor's office before December fifteenth and make sure that they have the forms that they need to change it to a homesteaded property and so that you get that homestead credit then.
And the county auditor office is down in St. Cloud, correct? Or can you go to the county office out here?
Not sure.
Yeah, it might be Wade Park.
Might be Wade Park.
I think they might have moved into Wade Park, but I'm not positive, not a hundred percent on that.
So in other words, what you people stated that a house of my value should only be ninety-nine dollars, I should see quite a decrease?
Overall, if you had no changes in your market value, which um didn't sound like you had a lot of change in the actual, like the the top number of market value.
Two, what was two hundred and fourteen in twenty-one and uh in twenty-two, it's two hundred and twenty, it'd be six, about a six thousand dollar change.
So you had a little bit of an increase, but that, you know, so you might, you probably wouldn't have seen a a huge difference in the taxes. Um you might even had see, you might even see like a slight decrease with the, once they can apply that homestead credit.
Okay. Go ahead.
Uh Lori, is what Mr. Taufman has is the preliminary estimate?
Yes.
And I think your presentation said the preliminary isn't what we're going to adopt.
That is not what we're proposing for final, we're proposing a reduction from that level.
So the number you're seeing, from what I gather from this presentation tonight, when we pass the final, is gonna be less.
Less than what it.
And you still might be not happy about the lesser amount, but it's gonna be less than what you got on there now.
Okay, all right. So you're telling me I should go visit the county first?
Yeah, I might have a address on here just on a tax statement.
Yeah, it's it's this number right here.
It's saying downtown on the.
Here's my statement.
But that's their truth and taxation hearing, so I'm not sure um.
I can run out to Wade Park and if it isn't, I'll have to go into St. Cloud, I guess.
Okay, yeah, Nate just looked it up. It is at the co- the courthouse downtown that you'd have to go to.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks, Dick.
Seeing anyone else come forward, we'll close the public hearing and then entertain either motion, is there a motion in here? If you wanna move forward or or questions?
Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
Okay, the increase in market value overall, we don't know that yet.
Um the estimate was a four point seven percent increase, but the final number we won't know till um really after they get that that level of the ju- December fifteenth, the homestead, because they gotta make sure they adjust for all those that they might have. Yeah, but typically it's not a whole, it's not significant from there. Usually our beginning of of January because we um, it's sometimes it's beginning of January. It just depends on when the county gives us the the market value numbers. And we need them for the fire district, so I I know I get them in early January at the latest.
The proposed statement you got shows a four percent increase.
Right, let's say, let's say the uh S V increase went up to six percent. What what do you do with that extra, you know, one and a half percent hypothetically?
Well, then when we get our final tax rate in early March, February, what they they send us the tax rate, it'll show a lower tax rate.
So the final one, final number won't come out till March.
Right.
So we're dealing with floating numbers here.
Right, but typically we're pretty close. The, we got the four point seven percent from the assessor's office and they're the ones that are, that give us that market value. Typically, it does, it's pretty close to that at this point in the year.
Yeah, another question? Yeah, Kevin.
So Lori.
Thank you.
Uh I should have been paying attention at a workshop, but when do we get, when do you get the uh L G A number? When, what time of the year do you get that?
I do pay attention during the legislative session and they will put out, um so that L G A is included in their tax bill.
But when do we know how much we're gonna get as a city from a revenue standpoint?
So I can see like that, if I may, I kind of know an estimate of what that's gonna be, but we don't get until about midia- mid uh end of July really, that we get the final certification from the state.
So we know what that number is and we expect to get that next year?
We we could, they have. Yes, now we have the certified level, level of what that is by the end of July.
And then my next question is just, and this would be more for for the mayor and councilman Loso. Is the uh the history of this meeting we're having tonight? Do we, is this, we're gonna adopt the final budget or can we wait until the meeting on twelve twenty?
Yeah, we can wait.
We don't have to, we don't have to do it tonight, do we?
No, no, we can wait and and we can also cut.
Well, I know you always wanna cut, but I'm just talking about in theory, we don't always adopt the final budget.
No.
The first meeting in December unless we all want to.
Exactly, and and between now and the next meeting, there'll be little if any change. And the numbers won't, there won't be anything back from the county or the state that would change what we're looking at today.
What could potentially change in your history as mayor?
Staff would have to find some more cuts if we wanted to cut, but they'd have to get direction from council on what to cut.
Okay.
And if we don't.
If you'd wanna be more conservative and and get along on my boat here and start cutting and get to a balanced budget, how I look like a balanced budget, you know, revenues versus expenditures should equal. You know, right now, in my thoughts, we we're spending more than we take in.
And that's why the taxes go up.
Right, right, exactly.
And as the town grows, there's a need to spend in personnel, in equipment, and all those other things.
And that's all, that's all relatable too.
I don't know, it's true.
Anyway, so we. I wanted to get into your boat, so I don't wanna row your boat.
What I'm saying is between.
When we would normally pass this type of stuff, because I'm comfortable with how the budget's been proposed.
Again, I, Bob has more history than I do. In the, in my twelve years, we've only twice, I remember going through some taxation, coming back and then approving it and trying to make some alterations. Normally, the numbers don't change. We're not gonna get any new information from the county. Um what you see in your prelim tax statement, probably pretty true to form. Um I think Mr. Taufman's uh um issue is probably localized, I don't see a lot of that. Um we have had some significant increases in the past that we've had to look at again. But overall, again, the numbers won't change very much, if at all. And we're not gonna get new information from the county or the state. The staff has done their work as we've directed them already. I I don't know that this is a bad number. It's, you're right, it's an increase. I mean, I looked at my statement, so I know what the proxy.
I I looked at the future of the city with its budgeting process and its fiscal responsibility. Because we're all here elected on the board, some were appointed for now, whatever. But we're 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 accountable to the people of the city for their tax bills. I don't know if you love paying taxes, you know, just, and it can go on and on forever. And it can also affect your growth rate. You know, pretty soon you're gonna be, you're gonna outtax what people can afford to move into your city. You know, if you look at the last five, ten years of the history of St. Joe, we haven't had a lot of uh uh property growth. You know, people moving into town as far as numbers, houses being built and so forth and so on. We've had a lot of activity other in other areas, but we haven't had a a home growth in what, ten years, twelve years? You know, and that kind of, that kind of puts a red flag for me. We aren't, we we're growing, but we aren't growing. You know, our uh population grew insignificant in my books before ten years. I mean, those numbers don't impress me at all. You know, we haven't had people coming in, so.
The housing market is a pretty complicated issue, Bob, if you wanna look at numbers. Number one, we haven't had, we haven't had, and I'm just, I'm I'm responding to you, what you just said.
Yeah.
So we haven't had a lot of open land. We haven't had a lot of developers come in. Costs have gone up over the past several years for building. I mean, it's not one thing or the other. Our fees are comparable to all the other cities in the area.
But pretty soon your growth isn't gonna support your, what what you're growing, what your costs are gonna be. And pretty soon the taxes are gonna be out outreach where they can afford to build a home. Because that's always part of when you build a home, what your taxes are gonna be. Because that's an extra two, three hundred dollars a month on your house payment if you uh mortgage out a house, unless you pay cash.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, and that affects the growth rate on the homes. You know, I'm just saying, I'm conservative. And I mean, sure, we could grow, but as we can afford it, not just because, you know, build it, they'll come type of crap, you know? I'm not a tax and spend guy, you know?
I don't know that the city is either. I've been, we've, we've.
Well, there's there's individuals that are taxing spend. That's what I'm saying.
And what I'm saying is we've been very, very responsible with how we spend the money and where we spend our, where we increase our taxes.
Look to the future of what's gonna be down, five years down the road, how it's gonna affect your growth rate in your homes and your businesses because of the tax rate. Now, you'll go to a different town, commercial or homes, you know? Just, 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 just their opinion, you know?
I think we're at a cusp and I think, I mean, I hear what all of you are saying, but I think what, I think the staff is doing their due diligence and I think they are doing a very good job. And I think how I see it is that we're at a growth right now. And I feel like it's going to propel up. I don't see, I don't see us going down.
Where is the growth?
It it's coming.
Where? Well, it's coming when?
And that, that's what I'm, I I think that we're projecting forward in that. And I don't think we're being overzealous about anything. I really don't. I think we're asking the right questions. Um I think that we are doing our due diligence as a council, especially with some of us being very fresh and new. Um so yes, I think it's very good that you're doing that, Bob. I I it, we all, we need all these questions. We need them to come to our table, you know, kind of me and John.
Well, I don't have questions. I I kind of see it happening five years down the road.
But I.
Just from my, based upon my experience.
Right, but I also see a growth coming down our pike if we make the right decisions. If we, if we shut down, then yeah, no growth is going to come.
See, I don't see the growth is gonna happen because the tax rates are going up too high for business to come in or homes to come in to build. Because it's not gonna be sustainable with the affordability of the uh work workaday market.
Well, but it doesn't look like the taxes are going that high compared to around us. So I mean, that's what I, that's what they're doing and this is what they're showing us.
Mark, mark my words, uh let's, I'll I'll go out one year, okay?
So the bottom line is we can approve resolution twenty twenty-one seventy-one, adopting it, or we can wait two weeks and do it in two weeks. And there would have to be.
Uh resolution twenty twenty-one point oh seven one.
Motion and second.
Motion and second. Approving resolution twenty twenty-one seventy-one, adopting final twenty twenty-one payable twenty twenty-two tax levy. Further questions or concerns?
That that uh uh tirade was just meant to uh invigorate some thought. Okay? Think a little bit deeper on the surface and go into the future.
And I think that's why councilman Kloster is going to you guys. You guys have been here for a long time.
Yeah.
With us being new, it's it's eye-opening to me too. I don't think anybody likes raises, their their taxes.
Well, you know, but uh look at five years down the road, if your taxes keep continuing the way it is and the uh the the uh workaday market doesn't increase. Now, your taxes go up five percent, your uh salary goes up one percent. You know, then you're eating up with inflation and all that stuff, so you're going down. And the taxes are going up and pretty soon your wages don't compensate to what the market is for housing with the taxes and everything else piled upon it. So just the, just a thought, invigorates thought.
Before we pass the resolution, I would just add uh to councilman Lozo's comments that we are seeing growth. I mean, it may not seem like it uh in some quarters, but we just approved a new townhome development down here on, south on College Avenue. We've got the former uh City Hall, AKA Butterscotch Building, which we weren't getting any tax revenue from, that we will be getting tax revenue from. I think this, the industrial park, and I just think this budget increase of two or two point one percent increase, as I understand it, within the whole context of we're in a high inflation environment now. Social Security payments went up by more than that. Medicare, your Medicare premium is gonna go up by more than two, I think. So we're in a period of economic activity where there's inflation. And for us to be at an increase of less than three percent is something that I'm very comfortable standing with. So the growth will come. We're growing, I think, more than you think. And this is a modest increase and is well within, um well, I think it is more conservative than other parts of the economy in terms of what's going on. We gonna vote?
Yeah, well, yeah, I am, but I'm just waiting for everybody else to talk. Everybody else might jump in. Oh, I was gonna say, the the one thing unusual about this budget cycle is we've had three new people on. Like Bob and I, you've seen, we've seen this for years and years. And so you have learned a great deal in a short period of time, a condensed period of time. And and you have asked all the right questions and there's a lot to go over. And I know you're only gonna get better from here on. I, you know, it's it's a lot to absorb in the first time on any council and everything.
And one thing, a- and I appreciate it, Bob, putting in that perspective because being new, I don't know all the questions to ask, right? I know as a citizen of St. Joe, yeah, I don't like taxes being raised. But having the information in front of me gives me more understanding of why and how. And I do appreciate you putting those questions in there because if we don't ask them, they're, then they're, no one's gonna look at it. So I do appreciate that.
I'm just trying to show you the, trying to induce you to foresight.
Yep.
Not just today, but for five years down the road, because what you do today sets the selling road.
Yep.
And the council did actually give staff good direction. I mean, you tore over the books and you did what we wanted you to do. And when Ryan's not gonna get that new truck, so that's good. Motion and second, resolution twenty twenty-one oh seventy-one. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed, motion does prevail. Thank you, Lori, very good job.
I got one thing to add.
We're moving on, Bob.
No, I got one thing to add.
Go ahead, I'm just teasing.
The budget for the newbies is just a guideline. It's not set in stone. Just because it's budgeted doesn't mean it's spent in twenty twenty-two. They can always say, you can always say no. You know, the truck twenty-five or buy the squad back or, you know, anything.
Yeah, we're we're down that road, man, I hate to tell you. Item seven, public hearing, twenty twenty-two fee schedule. Lori, you're back on the docket. Oh, no. Is this somebody else besides Lori? Did we lose the computer again? Did we lose the computer again? I heard there was a, I heard there was a Bitcoin. Yeah.
Yeah, I had it all just on one. Now I gotta get to, my screen isn't right though. Oh, you can read it up there.
Oh, there we go.
Okay, so now we're on to the, the fee schedule. Um, it does get done in, in coordination with the, the budget. Obviously, the budget is supported by the fees that you set in all the different departments of the city. Um, there are a few changes in the fee schedule, I, I went through all the changes in the agenda, but I'm not gonna go through all those here in the public, but just to highlight a couple of them. Um, the planning and zoning fees, the planning department determined that the escrow accounts that we're collecting were a little bit low to cover the cost, um, let's say for engineering and legal, to cover those, um, new projects. So we are proposing to increase those fees. Uh, Nate had reached out to C M B A and kinda went through that, um, why we had to do that and what that meant for them. So when we're talking about future growth, um, we're trying to be conscious of that as well cuz our fees definitely will direct some of that attention as well. Um, the park scheduling fees, uh, we talked about this a little bit at your November workshop and, um, the council had directed staff that they would like to increase it up to two hundred. We were, uh, proposing an increase in the park scheduling, uh, fees. So this would be rentals like for Millstream, Centennial, um, the Fire Hall, Wobegon Center. Um, so we, we do reflect the two hundred dollars that the council, um, had asked for in the fee schedule. Um, dog licensing, we're proposing to remove the dog licensing fees. Our ordinance still requires the rabies vaccination once a dog is, um, six months or older and that needs to be maintained and current for those animals. So if there is a dog at large that needs to be captured, um, we're gonna do our due diligence trying to, if the dog has a tag, we're gonna try to re, uh, return it to the owner. We do take it over to the clinic to see if there's a chip in the, the animal to try to return it from home if it does not have a tag. Um, we try to go through every effort we can to make sure that the dog would have been, um, vaccinated if a dog is at large. If there's an, uh, incident where, um, a dog bites somebody, that really gets into a police matter and they'll go through those, um, verifications for rabies and, and what needs to happen there anyways, regardless if the animal is licensed or not. The compost fees, uh, we are proposing an increase, um, in the fee and again, after your workshop, you had asked, um, us to provide a, a little bit more, um, a higher fee in order to cover potential, uh, future land costs or a different site location if, um, our contract runs out for that. Um, so we did try to do that, um, and reflect that in the, the budget as well for that, that compost fee. As I said, the other fees, um, if there's other questions on in particular fee, we can go through that, but, uh, other fees are in the agenda. Um, the final one that I had is the utility rates, um, and I wanted to let the public know that we do look at a ten-year, uh, lookout in the utility rates. Um, obviously, we don't know everything that's gonna happen ten years down the road, so we try to do our best estimate. We know rotation of certain things like, um, like the water tower maintenance that has to happen. We try to cover those costs in the rates, so we're collecting some money. So in those years when those projects have to happen, we don't have to increase the rates, you know, twenty, thirty percent to, to deal with those issues that are gonna come up. So we're trying to keep that, um, those rates as steady as we can, looking at that ten-year lookout. And looking at a sample of a single-family home, um, and typically the industry standard would look at, um, six thousand gallons a month water usage or twelve thousand gallons every two months, um, and sewers based on water usage. Um, kind of what a utility bill looks at in twenty twenty-one on that industry average of two hundred forty-eight dollars, um, with the proposed fees that we have in the fee schedule, that same bill would go up to almost two hundred and fifty-three dollars, so you're looking at just under a two percent increase. And I put projections out here for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, what they look like when we're looking at the ten-year rate schedule. Um, our refuse contract only goes through the end of twenty twenty-three, so we don't know exactly what that rate's gonna be and I've, um, italicized that as well in, in that proposed twenty-four rate, but just to give you an idea of what, um, the future rates are looking like. And that's all I had on, on the fee schedule presentation, I did put a lot more dialogue in the agenda packet, but if you have questions, I'm happy to answer.
So, so, uh, Lori, the escrow fees for like a property development, some of those are going up significantly, but escrow is nothing more than setting aside money that they're gonna spend anyway, right?
So what we'll do is collect that escrow and then we'll, we'll track, you know, our fees, engineering and legal typically that go against that, if there's money that remains in that escrow, we, we will return that to the, the developer. If it goes over, we invoice out the overage.
So they just have to have more money upfront, but it's money they're gonna spend anyway?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then who, who, who's in charge of getting stray dogs? Is that Public Works or is that Police?
Ryan.
Public Works?
Truck twenty-five.
And then if a dog.
Not it, not it.
And if a dog attacks someone and there's a complaint, then it's to the police department.
Then it's Kayla.
Okay. What do we have, a dog, who's the dog catcher?
Kevin, I'm with you, he won't deputize me. So, we need a public hearing, right? For, okay, so that, after the presentation, we'll open up the floor to, open up the, uh, public hearing portion for, for the fee schedule. Anybody wishing to address the council can come up and say anything. Seeing no one come forward, we're gonna close the public hearing and then entertain any motions you guys want to make. That would be motion and second on twenty twenty-one sixty-eight, correct?
So in the, for the fee schedule, it's actually an ordinance amendment, so the first action would be for the ordinance and then we have a summary, summary publication as a separate action.
Motion and second on resolution twenty twenty-one sixty-eight, oh, is that the summary publication?
Yeah, we need to do the ordinance first.
What is that?
So I'll, I'll move to consider adopting the proposed amendment of the twenty twenty-two fee schedule. Second.
Motion and second, uh, approving the amending, or amendment of the, of the ordinance. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion does carry. Now, we've already had a motion and second on twenty twenty-one sixty-eight. Questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are moved.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, okay. Thank you, again, Lori, thank you, good job, staff, very good job, yep, a lot of work, good stuff. Randy, you wanna say anything tonight? Okay, Randy. We're going right to the, yeah, yeah, okay, we're going right to mayoral reports, see if I can read this. So just a couple of things, I wanna bring everybody's attention to, uh, last, two weeks ago was the CGMC conference and I will publish all the presentations to you guys, really good. They talked about state demographics in the last ten years and the changes, they talked about outstate childcare and the issues following it, uh, Attorney General Ellison, who was there to talk about the opioid settlement and, uh, where they're at with the money. And then we talked, uh, President Minnesota retailers came in, how about, about, uh, um, not only, uh, bringing retailers back into your town, but what inflation is doing to that right now. And then we adopted lobbying positions of CGMC and the biggest one that had actually a budget increase was this building codes, land use annexation that legislation's been introduced and so there'd be more follow-up on that. But I'll send the, the presentations, all the stuff to Therese and she'll distribute to you guys. It was, everyone was recorded, plus they had the, the packet of slides as well. So the other thing I wanna bring up, uh, Dwight and I met with C S B S J U security staff, oh, Therese was there as well, just to talk about things going on, um, nothing earth-shattering, I don't think, right? Um, and I went to Winter Walk last weekend, Friday, Saturday, and it was packed downtown. I don't know whoever else was down there, but, I mean, I ran into John, it was packed, I mean. And the reason I bring that up is because, two things, based on the amount of people and vehicle traffic, we may wanna consider policing or some kind of, and the lighting at College of Minnesota is really, really bad.
So I've got one thing for you, prime example is, I was there with my three boys, we saw Santa, we walked to the church and then as we were walking across the street, I had a car not stop and blow right through that halfway intersection while I was walking, so just prime example and that was just me.
And we know there's a lot of jaywalking stuff, but that night it was almost like a July third kind of, it wasn't that many, but there are a lot of people on traffic, so we may wanna just, I talked to Ray about it as well that night, about improving kind of the detail behind traffic and flow and.
Well, I think the trees too, I don't think we need to have as many trees.
Okay, so the other thing I, I agree with you, I don't disagree with you at all. Um, the other quote I got was the next day on vandalism to some of the trees and some of the businesses and that went on. But, uh, I talked to Ryan, if, if we do have Winter Walk, like, and we can, uh, partner with Ray, you know, we could probably reduce our load of the Christmas lights all the way down Minnesota and all the way down College Avenue, just kinda reinvent ourselves in downtown some way. And you're right, I think there's, we overloaded on the trees, but that's a Ray thing, you know, I.
Oh, it was nice, don't get me wrong, it was with so many people, it was like trying to maneuver.
Just walk on the sidewalk.
Everywhere, it was, it was, but I think as a city, we might wanna try and reinvent ourselves into that event. The weekend before is small shop crawl and then right after that.
January twenty-ninth, maybe bring that to Winter Walk.
I don't know if there's enough ice and snow all the time on the first of December. That's why we do it at kind of the end of January, but anyway, if we could invent, maybe even partner with Ray and Winter Walk to do downtown, help them with lighting and help that rather than put up a bunch of lights on poles and stuff like that, but yeah, Kevin.
So I'd recommend at our next workshop, we bring Ray in, you know, while things are fresh, instead of talking about it nine or ten months from now, let's do a deep dive on our reactions to it and ideas and stuff and, uh, then plan for next year.
Yeah, absolutely.
Whenever our next workshop is, I know we have one like once every three months, don't we, or two months?
We almost have every month.
We'll actually have one in January, I have the month in January.
Don't be so excited.
No, I think Ray.
No, I think we bring him back then and we kind of do a, a recap of it.
And, and I talked to Ray and he has so many people involved right now that even he, I think, is confused about details versus actual, I, generating ideas.
And I, I saw him that night too and, you know, he's like, oh, it's a learning experience and they were dealing with heaters and running around, he was just very busy.
I, and Ray is just a great spirit for things like this, but I think he needs help with details and, you know, organization, administration, absolutely. Um, that's all I have. Item ten. I'll second both of you. Motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're all adjourned, thank you very much, all of you. All this is, we renewed the liquor.